Well, good morning, everyone. It is now nine o'clock a.m. and we welcome each and every one of you to our first Board of Commissioners meeting for 2018 and happy new year to everyone. We do ask that you would join me in invocation if you would please bow your heads and then afterwards we will stand for the pledge of allegiance. The heavenly father, we just come this day thanking you for this day that you have made, this year that you have made, and we will rejoice and experience great things here in Henry County. We thank you that you will continue to bless our citizens and to also bless all of us in elected offices at the county level, the city levels, the state level, and even the national levels, that you would give us wisdom and guidance so that we would do all that is good for the people of this county, for the state, for the nation. We also ask that you just continue to bless Henry County for safety and great health and also that we will continue to live in peace and prosperity. And I pray this prayer in Jesus' name and all that agree, please say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united enough, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. This meeting of the Board of Commissioners is now hereby called to order. We do have one item that needs to be removed from the agenda and it was item 11A for the magistrate court regarding the appointment of a senior magistrate. Are there any other changes or revisions to the agenda? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Chair, so move.
We have a motion?
Second.
Have a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We will now move into our next item regarding our Henry County Years of Service Awards and we're looking forward to this as we recognize our employees. And we do ask Ms. Melissa Robinson to come forth.
Chairman, uh, Doris Patterson will actually be doing a presentation and Brenda Self will join.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Patterson. We welcome you this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And happy new year to everyone. I'm also joined by Mr. Harold Cooper, who's the Assistant Director for HR.
Good morning.
And what we like to do this morning is we are very pleased to announce the employees who have received milestone awards in the year 2017. I understand it's been a number of years since our employees have been recognized publicly in this way, so we're extremely happy to be able to do that this morning. The milestones that we will recognize are employees who have received 20 years of service in 2017, 25 years of service in 2017, 30 years of service in 2017, 35 years of service in 2017, and we actually have one person who has more than 40 years of service and we are recognizing that individual today as well. We also want to acknowledge that we have a number of employees who will not be getting awards today but who have exceeded these milestones over the last few years. So, we want to encourage those employees as well, we want to acknowledge them first, but we also want to encourage them to stay with the county so that when they reach their next milestone, they'll be recognized publicly as well. We also want to ask you Board of Commissioners, if you would, what we'll be doing is calling each group of employees, we've got over 40 employees that are being recognized today, which is an awesome thing. We'll call them by group, so we'll start with the 20-year group and then we'll go to the 30, 35, like that. We will ask that, once the 20-year group has been called, they will proceed to the assembly area for pictures. If you will at that point join them, we'll do pictures of the 20-year group, they will sit down, then we'll call the next group. And if you all could just stay there, please, and that way we'll be able to facilitate this in a expedited, in a quick manner. Also, at this time, what we'd like to do is go ahead and start with our list of names. Now, some of the employees were not able to be here this morning for different reasons. However, I do think it's important for us to recognize that their name is actually on the list. So, what I'd like to do is start with the 20-year group. Those of you that are here for 20 years, as I call your name, if you will, please come to the front. Mr. Cooper, Ms. Matthews, and Mr. Johnson will be giving you awards and shaking your hands, and then, once you're done, if you'll proceed to the picture area to the right. So, for 20 years, we have Ms. Brenda Bennett. Ms. Brenda Bennett is in the Budget Department. We have Roy Nix, who's in the Fire Department. Jason McCullough, Fire Department. Robert English, Fire Department. Jason Manel, Fire Department. Wanda Maddox, Fire Department. Cindya Chambers, District Attorney's Office. Barbara Crittenden, Building and Plan Review. Alan White, Sheriff's Office. Levester Sims, Sheriff's Office. Kenneth Turner, Police Department. Stephen Wilson, Police Department. Julie Vincent, Tax Assessor's Office. Pat Delk-Bogue, GIS. Sharon Mitchell, Sheriff's Office. Jimmy Trampineer, Sheriff's Office. Michael Hardy, Sheriff's Office. Harold Hogan, Maintenance. Angela Lassley, Police Department. Michelle Price, Barclay, Public Works. Hutch Purvis, Facilities. James Goyn, Police Department. Jeff Maddox, Police Department. Charlotte Allen, 911. This is our 20-year group. Give them a round of applause, please. So, Commissioners, at this time, if you could please join us to the right, we'll get pictures.
Commissioners, if you don't mind, can you please stay on this area? Thank you.
At this time, Madam Board Chair and distinguished board members, we would like to honor our 25-year employees for their undying commitment to Henry County. Mr. Michael Cohn, Sheriff Department. James Burke, Police. Tracy Richardson, Police Department. John Harper, Sheriff's Department. Kewena Starks, Tax Assessor's Office. Dennis Hall, Sheriff's Department. Mark Henley, Fire Department. Michael Mercer, Sheriff's Department. Lynn Witt, Senior Services. Stuart Duffy, Sheriff's Department. And Vince Farah, Animal Control. We thank you all for your undying commitment to Henry County.
Okay, the last groups that we will recognize will be our 30 years of service, 35 years of service, and our 40-plus years of service. For 30 years of service, we have David Ritchie, Public Safety, Fire Department. Charles Brooks, Fire Department. Calvin McClendon, Stormwater. Donna Holder, Recreation. Laura Bagby, Facilities. Mitchell Scoggan, Fire Department. And Mark Spradlin, Fire Department. This is our 30-years-of-service group. Okay, of course, we save the best for last. We have 35 years of service from the Fire Department, Stan Jones, and from the Sheriff's Office, David Foster. I understand that Chief Foster is out of town, is not here today, but I did want to recognize, is Mr. Jones here? Not here. Okay. Those are 35 years of service. And then, our 40-plus years of service, is the sheriff here? Can you come forward, sir? We had one employee of the whole county that had more than 40 years of service and it was Sheriff McBrayer, so we wanted to have recognized him as well. Again, we want to say thanks to all of the employees we recognize here today and we look forward to presenting these milestones again soon. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Patterson, and of course, are there any comments from the Board regarding our service awards? Okay, well, I would, again, as our employees are exiting, we just want to, again, commend you and thank you for all of your tireless work over the years and many years as we spoke about. So, again, we say thank you and looking forward to a great 2018 on the team. Thank you much. Okay, well, as everyone is exiting, we'll move to our next agenda item. And this is regarding the appointment of our Vice Chair. Each year, the Board appoints a Vice Chair to act in the absence of the Chair, and this year, it is District Five's rotation, so that we ask for a motion to appoint District Five Commissioner Bruce Holmes as Vice Chair for 2018.
Chair, so move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you all and thank you, Commissioner Holmes. We'll now move to the next item regarding the appointment of County Clerk and Deputy County Clerk. Each year, the Board of Commissioners appoints the Clerk and Deputy Clerk. Unless there are any objections, we ask for a motion to reappointing Stephanie Braun as County Clerk and Consuela Connor as Deputy Clerk.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? We will now move to the resolution appointing Dr. Andrea Miles to the Board of Health. Ms. Andrea Miles has worked with the Piedmont Physicians Group and has done so, and she's also primarily worked in other physician facilities. She's held, worked in the American Academy of Pediatrics and also the American College of Physics. So, again, we are calling for a motion to appoint Dr. Andrea Miles to the Board of Health.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? We'll now move to our consent agenda and the following agenda items will be considered on the consent agenda. For connecting Henry, we have a resolution approving the Family Connection Operating Grant for Connecting Henry from the Georgia Department of Human Services. From Public Works, we have a resolution authorizing a budget amendment of FY 2017 L-MIG funds from restricted fund balance to Henry County Department of Transportation, general supplies, and asphalt. Under SPOS, we have three items. One, a resolution approving the utility relocation agreement with Georgia Power Company for McDonough Parkway Extension in District Three from State Route 42 to State Route 155. We also have a resolution approving the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation Estimated Cost for Amalee Road in District Two. We also have a resolution approving the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation Estimated Cost for the South Bethany Road at Old Jackson Road Intersection Improvement as a SPOS four project in District One. Are there any of these items that need to be removed from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? We're now moving to, and this ends our consent agenda. We will now move into our next item for SPOS and for a resolution approving a budget amendment regarding Elliot Road in District Four. Good morning, happy new year, Mr. Mayor.
Happy new year, Chair and Board Members. Elliot Road is an approved District Four SPOS four dirt road improvement project. A budget amendment in the amount of $1,508,695 is necessary for the construction and utility relocation. Staff recommends using the following District Four funds. $1,036,999 from Selfridge over Little Cotton Indian Creek Bridge. $230,645 from Hemp Hill Road at State Route 138. And $241,051 from Kellytown Park. Seal bids were solicited through the Purchasing Department for Elliot Road, bid number 18-16. Ten seal bids were received and reviewed. The lowest bid is $2,847,199.50 from Omshif Construction. Staff recommends approval of the budget amendment stated amount given and also for the award in the bid to pave Elliot Road to be given to the lowest bidder, Omshif Construction. Also, this resolution authorized the Chair or the County Manager to approve any change orders less than 50,000. I will take any questions.
You've heard the presentation, are there any questions? Commissioner Prince?
Thanks for bringing this. How long has this been on the table?
Uh, it's been since SPOS III, so it's been for a while now. It's a very, uh, very needed project and a lot of property owners have been waiting for this for a long time.
Quite some time. Would you do me a favor? Would you take the constituents, my constituents, through where we're getting the funding from and why we're taking the funding from there and kind of explain a little bit of that, please?
Yes, sir. Due to the project, there's some utility relocations that, of course, there's some big water mains and also some utility power poles and things like that, that the costs are a lot more than was expected. So, in order to compensate for that and also for the bid itself, there was three projects that, one up, for example, the first one, I'll start with Hemp Hill 138. That project is ongoing, it's almost, if anybody's been going through there, the roundabout is just about done. This is additional funds that were not used for the construction, so that project is moving forward and we have this excess funds that we can use it for. Kellytown Park, the park has been completed, it's been used for quite a few times, over, I would say, over six months or more. So, and there's still some funds available in the park in case something comes up in the near future, there's still some additional funds in that project as well. The Selfridge Bridge project, the design is moving forward, but that's as far as we're gonna go. Being that the bridge is gonna be exceeding more than what we already originally expected it, there's no need to move forward on construction because we're gonna need more funds for it. So, that's why staff recommends using this money toward this project that right away is completed and is moving forward.
Just to reiterate to my constituents, pulling this money from another project is not killing the other project. We just have some overages on the different projects. We saved quite a bit of money on Hemp Hill Road and in Kellytown Park, we've got a pretty good park out there and we're pulling just a little bit of money out of that. And then Selfridge, you explained Selfridge, we actually need quite a bit more to actually make the repairs to the bridge, so this isn't killing any projects. So, I just want to make sure my constituents understand this. And this has been a long time coming. We've got very few dirt roads in the fourth district and we're getting even less now. So, I'm sure the constituents out there are gonna be very pleased this is going underway. Would you take everybody through the construction process real quick, because I don't want to get folks in too big of a hurry?
Correct.
And let them know the process.
So, once, if approved today, it's gonna take about two weeks or so for the contractor to provide the information needed, the bonds and insurance. Thereafter, we're gonna set up a pre-construction meeting. So, hopefully, by the end of this month, we'll have a pre-construction and start, hopefully, by the end or first of February, start the construction, the clearing. That's gonna be the first step, the clearing. After clearing, we're gonna have to wait for utilities to relocate. As you know, some utilities take a little bit longer than others, so depending on that, the construction will move forward once all the utilities are relocated. We have given 10 months for the duration of this project, so the good thing about it is win the winter time, which is great for clearing and to move utilities, and by the time spring, summer comes, we should be starting moving dirt. So, hopefully, by the end of the year, it'll be completely paved and the project completed.
Okay, and just as a side note, if any of my constituents that live on this road have any questions or any concerns as the construction moves forward, please feel free to call me. My number is on my page on the county. And we have had an issue in the past with some utility relocation, so I just want to let my constituents know out there that it may take a little longer than you think, but it is moving forward and we're getting that direction. But again, if you live out there, please feel free to give me a call and I'll stay up on top of this and let you know which way it's going. With that, I don't have any more comments.
All right, any other questions or comments from the Board? All right, hearing none, the floor is now open for a motion.
Chairman, I'll move to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
The resolution is approved. We now ask Captain McGlamry to come and present the resolution regarding the purchase of 100 smartphones for our Uniform Patrol Division, code enforcement, and also animal control. And Deputy Chief Amberman.
Good morning, Madam Chair, fellow board members, and happy new year to you.
Good morning, happy new year.
I just believe this is such an important topic that we're about to discuss that I just wanted to say a few words before Captain McGlamry gives you his presentation. The last time I came in front of y'all, we talked again about technology and transparency, and here we are again. And I just believe this is really important for the Police Department to get body cameras. I believe it's important for them to have a way to document what we're actually doing in the field. And there's many reasons. Increased officer safety, documentation of violations, citizen behavior, and other events. It'll actually reduce court time, but it's also gonna give us video evidence to use in internal investigations, which should reduce frivolous lawsuits and increase the likelihood of successful prosecutions. As well, we can use this as a training tool. We'll be able to go back and review officers during incidents and actually see what they did right or did wrong. We can actually make, it'll actually make the department better by having this capability to watch every interaction we have with our citizens. And just having this ability and having body cameras makes us more transparent, which makes misconduct a lot less likely to even occur in the first place. Research has shown that being videotaped has effect, not only on the police but on the public as well. It lets everyone know they're being watched, they're being videotaped, and are expected to follow the rules. In one study at Brioito Police Department of California that I researched, I found that use of force incidents were actually reduced by 250% once cameras were introduced into their police force. As well, complaints against officers dropped by 87% from the previous year once cameras were introduced. This is something that the Police Department wants, and I believe this is something that the county actually needs. We want to be held accountable for our actions in the field, and we want to be transparent with the citizens that we serve. I think this is a way to have a neutral witness at the scene on every police and citizen encounter. Up next will be Captain McGlamry. He's done the majority of the work on this project. I believe you'll be very satisfied after you hear what he has to say in his presentation.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. First of all, we believe that we should not be limited by a camera-only device. When available, technology is out there for the functionality of multiple devices at a significant cost savings. This device is capable of providing multiple functions to each officer. First, it's a cellphone. It allows the officers to communicate with each other and the public. Currently, officers are using their personal cellphones to handle thousands of calls for service when citizens call in to discuss a litany of situations. They want to talk about legal issues, other crimes that they've been the victim of, things like that. And currently, when they call dispatch, an officer has to use his personal cellphone to call the complainant back. Second, it gives them access to their county email. To access their county email at any time, on duty and off duty, and receive information on individuals while they're away from their car. If an officer's dealing with someone outside their car and they may be a wanted individual, they want to confirm who they are. A picture can be sent via email straight to that device and they can see who they're dealing with without having to return to the car to do that business. Next, it's a text messaging device, which will improve internal communications and expedite calls for call-up services. For instance, if we have a major incident such as a critical missing child or something to that effect, we'll send a mass text message out to personnel to respond to that location and let them know that this is what the person looks like, this is what we're looking for, and this is what we need. It's an audio recorder. It's a GPS locator. As you can see on the board right now, that's two phones that are active, that are operating right now in real time, and you'll be able to see where officers are in real time. Supervisors will be able to see where their assets are, where the officers are located so they can respond to calls quicker. It's a body camera application. As the Deputy Chief was discussing, many of our officers have As the deputy chief was discussing, many of our officers have already purchased their own personal body cams and are wearing them right now because they want them. What we're doing is getting the application for them, so there's no longer a need to do that. There's no, once they get the body camera, in this particular situation, it has a cloud management software. Once the officer is done recording, it shoots up to the cloud server immediately. There is no more delay. There's no going back to the precinct to dock it or to upload it. It happens immediately, and within minutes, a supervisor is able to review what just took place. It also provides live audio feeds. A supervisor can tap into that body camera live and see what's going on and hear what's being said. This would be instrumental in many cases, such as an active shooter situation, or if you have multiple officers deployed to an area, you can see and hear what's going on from a command center. And it also provides, this agreement also gives us what's called Motion DSP Ikena Software, which is a four-thousand-dollar value. If we need to redact some video for an open records request and blur out faces and things like that, this software gives us that capability and we have personnel ready to do that. It's a four-thousand-dollar value. It's a nice piece of software. It also gives, provides a hotspot for each officer so they can access the internet through their computer to access GCIC and NCIC from their car. I'm gonna show you a quick video just to see, give you an understanding of what the quality of it is. This is a traffic stop.
Camera recording started.
All right. You still live at South Ola Road in McDonough?
Yes.
All right, bud. Just hang tight for me, okay?
Okay.
And that was just a quick demonstration showing you the quality of the video that you're getting with this device. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Well, thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board? Okay. Commissioner Prince? And then Commissioner Clemens?
Yeah. I'd like to say what a big deal this is. We looked in the past at getting just body cameras, and the issue that we ran into was actually storage. It was going to cost an exorbitant amount to store all the files that were being downloaded from the body cameras, and now this gets uploaded to the cloud. So, I have to commend staff. When you guys brought this to me, I was a little skeptical, but I've researched this quite a bit, and it's a win-win situation. And so, the citizens understand the computers in the police cars do not have Wi-Fi capability. And so, many of the officers have what are called hotspots on their phones, and they can hook into their laptop and get GCIC, which is current information about somebody they're pulling over. Well, now, all of our officers can have the Wi-Fi capability and can have the GCIC in their car. And this is important for the citizen and the officer. The officer can look up someone the second they pull them over, so they know if they're walking up to a car that has a felon in it. Or the same way, they can look up somebody very quickly, see that they're not wanted, issue a citation very, very quickly without going back through dispatch. Because at this time, again, we're still having a radio into dispatch every time that we pull somebody over, and dispatch has to look everything up, get back with the officer. What ends up happening when dispatch is very, very busy, the officer doesn't get a response. And so, a simple traffic stop could take forty-five minutes. But this is a pretty good deal. I did ask about, and I will ask again for the public, the safety and security of the information that's uploaded to the cloud. Can you expand on that a little bit, please, Amberman?
The storage is CGIS compliant, Criminal Justice Information System. They store all this on what's called a Windows Azure system, and that has been, they have an agreement with the state of Georgia, the Georgia Bureau of Investigation. Not only that, we took a step further. We had the employees of this company get CGIS compliant as well. Their employees took the same test police officers do. I think it was a little bit more than was needed, but we took those extra steps. So, everything that we're doing is CGIS compliant, which is in line with GCIC and NCIC.
Good, good. And so, to further that, just so the constituents get this and everybody understands, every Henry County officer that pulls you over now or in the UPD will have a body camera on them, and it will be running. And it's a step, I feel that the state is probably gonna mandate this here shortly, that we have to do it. So, I appreciate you guys getting ahead of the curve. We've been working on this a while. So, it's a win-win. I like the GPS. I like tracking. It's gonna actually shorten response times. This is the solution. Haven't used it yet, hadn't seen an application, so until then, I'll, you know, I'll have to see how it goes.
We'll welcome you, so anytime you want to.
So, but I appreciate you guys bringing this. It's about time we got body cameras on our officers, and it's about time we got GCIC capability in the cars. And to further this for the constituents, we just recently bought a bunch of software. And these phones will pair, I'm guessing, with our new software so we can dispatch the closest unit to an area that's in need. So, I really appreciate you guys bringing this. This was something that was needed, and this is really an interesting proposal, and I like it. Again, we'll have to see how it goes. It will help our officers and it'll help the citizens, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Clemens?
I echo much of what Commissioner Prince is saying, you know, and I know that as a county, we must invest in technology for our public safety, so that's been something really big for me. And I know that the body cameras are vital to our public safety and to the police department having, but also, it also helps us with community concerns that citizens are encountering with our police officers, so that's a plus. It's a plus on both sides, I feel. We got the accountability, transparency, but also the evidence documentation, which is huge that we have proper evidence when we're having to deal with the court system to make sure that there's evidence documentations from these cameras. So, that storage is important. My main concern is that the funding for this, I saw that it says Visual Labs is going to do the first training for nine-thousand-five-hundred dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
And that'll be for the existing officers. I want you guys to please address, new officers that are coming on, how that training will continue, how the funding, you know, what we will do for funding, will we have somebody that is trained annually to continue the funding as technology changes? And the other thing is the monthly service fees that will be incorporated in 2018, 2019 budget. It doesn't specify what that amount is, and I don't think any amount is too great for what we're talking about funding today. But I just wanna make sure that as a board, we understand that this will take additional funding in 2018, 2019 to continue this stuff. I mean, we have the money today, but 2018, 2019, we don't know that amount, and we need to be on board with whatever it is to continue to fund this for the data storage, the management, and the training to keep this ongoing, because it's no good to get it today if we're not continuing the training as the technology changes and we're not continuing to upgrade and support this project. So, I'm one-hundred percent in support, but I wanna make sure that as a board, we understand this will be ongoing and an additional line item. I don't want you guys to have to bring a budget to us, and then we start scratching stuff out, and this is so important that we do, or we have to take something out to fund this. This needs to be in addition to whatever we already have. So, I just wanna put that out there. So, if you would just address the ongoing training and how we will continue to make sure that the implementation of these cameras are utilizing, that every officer is getting trained, and how does that work in budget?
The company, Visual Labs, has been more than dedicated to help us with ongoing training, to something we've already discussed. But we're not gonna pay ten thousand dollars for them to come back every year. That's unnecessary. We have a training division that is gonna be on board with this whole implementation process, and future officers that come in, they will be trained in the same manner that the officers do in this initial rollout. Secondly, we will do updated training. That'll be in our standard operating procedure. Not only will officers get this initial training, but they will get trained in the laws as it applies to body cameras, because we all know body camera law has changed multiple times because it's so new to everybody.
Right.
So, we're gonna keep everyone updated on that and the functionality. The functionality is very simple, and that's what we wanted, is something simple that the officers could use out in the field quickly.
And with that training, make sure that you guys touch on policies, because I know that with the new updated training that's coming through, there's a lot of policy changes as far as privacy policies with body cameras from a police perspective, and so from a legal perspective from this county, having those legalities come back to us on what we need to do as far as, you know, protecting the rights of people that we're videoing in camera. So, make sure.
I've already reached out to the district attorney's office, solvency office, and the prosecuting attorney council, and they're gonna consult with us about what the legal ramifications are.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none. The floor is now open for a motion.
We'll move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any question, comments, or other concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Congratulations, and we are proud to see this resolution pass. We're now moving to our next item regarding Human Resources and Risk Management Resolution for Incentive-Based Tiered Medical Premium Structure for Wellness Participation, and we welcome Ms. Doris Patterson to join us again.
Good morning. Item thirteen is a resolution for the Board of Commissioners to adopt and approve an incentive-based tiered medical premium structure for wellness participation to be effective June first of 2018. Basically, summary of this item is, over the last several years, the county management team and the board, quite frankly, have identified the need to enhance the employee wellness initiative so that we can ultimately reduce our medical premium costs and also, at the same time, improve the health of, or take efforts to improve the health of our employees. So, what this proposes is to put in place, effective for the 2018, 2019 plan year, an incentive program, which is a structure for the first year, which is the next benefits year, that will have two requirements. The first would be for employees to complete either an annual biometric screening or a physical between June first of 2017, which would have been this past June, and April ninth of 2018. So, there's almost a year span where this item either could have been done or can be done between now and April ninth of this year. The second requirement would be for employees to complete a designated online health risk assessment, which is provided by their carrier. So, either, currently, we have Blue Cross, Blue Shield, and Kaiser, and they both actually provide programs for an online health assessment, health risk assessment. This is typically a fifteen-to-thirty-or-forty-minute activity, depending on the individual, where they go online and just answer some questions about their health status in order to plan for improvements within those areas. So, for the first plan year, what we are proposing is an incentive for employees to participate in those two activities, which would be a forty-dollar-per-month premium credit for any employee that's enrolled in the county-sponsored plan. This would be only one employee per family. In some cases, we have spouses that work at the county, but they would only be eligible for one incentive for the family. The other thing that this resolution proposes, which I think is very important, is we want to have this be the beginning, where every January, we're coming before the board with a proposal to add more activities or incentive programs where we can continue to improve the premium costs and also the health of our employees. So, each year, we would hope to come to you with other activities, other proposals of things that we could do additionally going forward to assist with this effort. We also have our consultants here this morning. Our benefits consultant is here, and our wellness consultant is here as well from Epic. So, if you have other questions, I'll be happy to entertain them at this time, otherwise we will ask that you will approve this resolution.
Okay. Questions from the board? I know I've got one as well. So, go.
One, the four-hundred-and-eighty-dollar annually, I need to know, how is that funded? And if the monies that we get from ACCG and other insurance premiums for our wellness program, if we can use that fund for this incentive? So, that's the second question. Two, is there any evidence-based research that shows that this strategy is gonna decrease our premiums?
Case, I can answer part of that, and for part of it, I will ask for the research side, Ms. Ayana Collins, who's our wellness consultant from Epic, to assist with the research side. But I'll answer the first part of that first. From the budget side, we have not, we don't have the numbers yet from the budget side. As you know, the budget part of our benefits program won't be presented until probably late February, March. So, we don't have the numbers yet. But once those numbers are presented to us, the incentive is taken into consideration so that the funding will balance out. But we're not going to be, I think your question may lead to, we're not going to be paying out money that we will later have to figure out how to fund. You include that when you put together your budget for your benefits program.
So, you're saying that we would, the county would have to fund, basically pay people to participate in the wellness program?
I don't think that's the way that we would be presenting it. Ayana, can you go ahead and come and explain on that side, please?
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Ayana Collins. I am the wellness consultant for Epic Insurance Brokers. I'm working hand-in-hand with Mike Gases from the Mike Gases Agency on providing structure around the employee wellness incentive program. I work with quite a few counties here in the Atlanta metro area with Chris Clark, who's with Epic Insurance Brokers as well. When you're, the question of funding and if you're paying into the program, if you look at, just historically, in terms of how wellness programs have evolved over the years, you have to look at it as an initial investment into your employees. That over time, you will see that investment or that return of investment or value of investment come back to you. So, initially, what we're asking is that, yes, you can use funds from ACCG. You can also use funds from your medical carriers to help support the cost that you will may initially see from putting in a wellness program of this type. And then you also asked about evidence-based research, and so, yes, over time, you will see, hopefully, we'll see a reduction in your medical premium, because the one thing that you're really doing, and the one thing that we want this program to do, is to educate your employees on terms of their own health status. We want them, you wanna create that aha moment where if I'm going in and I'm having that annual physical, or if I don't wanna go to see the doctor or I don't have time, I can use company time to go and have a fifteen-minute biometric screening results that will give me an indication of where I am or in terms of risk level for a chronic disease, which we know are preventable. And so, if I have that aha moment that my blood pressure is high or that I have high cholesterol, or that my A1C level is now at a high risk for me to have diabetes down in the future, I now know, or may create an aha moment where I can now take some necessary steps to help reduce my risk in those chronic diseases. And so, that's the first thing that we really wanna do, which is to make sure that the employees are aware of their own health status. And that's what the health risk assessment does as well. As Doris mentioned, it could be anywhere as short as ten minutes. It could be a little longer than that, just depending on the time that they take and to fill out that information. And then, once they do this questionnaire, then they'll have a better understanding of where their quote-unquote strengths are in their health status, and then where their areas for needs improvement. And with each carrier, with Kaiser as well as Blue Cross Blue Shield, they'll have certain steps. So, if I know that my eating is bad and my cholesterol is high, I can now go online to my individual carrier and watch videos, get healthy recipes. I can work with the wellness coordinator here in Henry County to be involved with some of the activities that we're doing, which was quite a few activities. I saw the calendar. That will help me just take certain steps to help reduce my risk. So, yes, over time, you will see, hopefully, we'll see, I should say, the numbers come down in terms of the medical premium cost. But what you will also see is that that value of investment that we talked about, that qualitative return on an investment, meaning that you'll have healthier employees, you may see a reduced sick time. You'll see, again, I mean, I was impressed by just employees who've been here for twenty, thirty, forty years. You actually will have, the employees will feel that their county really cares for them and that they're invested in their health.
Okay. But I was, okay. We're not talking about the wellness program. We understand that, and I agree with that. It's totally needed. I understand the health risk assessment. This is the question. Do we have to pay our employees four-hundred-and-eighty dollars to participate in the health risk assessment? Is that necessary? Because the wellness program we already have, we want them to participate in the health risk assessment. So, are we saying that it costs the county four-hundred-and-eighty dollars per employee? Because that's what this says. Because that's what this says. We need to give them an incentive, give them $480 extra to participate. And I need you to answer, please, if we have to pay to participate in this program.
I just heard the county manager would like to answer.
Yes, Commissioner Clemens, we are not paying employees to participate. This is strictly an incentive for the employees. And it would be, and I guess the easiest way to explain it is, if I decide to do the health risk assessment and to do my biometric screening, I will see a reduction in my premium costs that I pay. So that is the incentive that the employee will see versus me paying whatever the, my monthly amount would be for my premium cost for insurance. It would actually be about a forty-dollar reduction because I've elected to do the three things that, or the two things that Doris has explained. Now, for those employees who elect not to do a health risk assessment, not to do the biometric screening, there are no repercussions. You pay your current premium costs. So we're not going to penalize those who elect not to do it. But those who elect to participate, they will see a reduction in their premium costs. But we are not paying out any funds to employees to participate.
Do we pay their premium cred, do we pay that forty dollars for them?
Well, it's a reduction to what they're paying.
So there's no impact on the budget?
There will be an impact on the budget.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
There absolutely will be an impact on the budget.
And it will be per employee that we will pay for the employee. They'll, they won't pay it, but there will be an impact on the budget. And we don't have to have that to have this program.
Well, you want to offer this incentive so that you can get employees to participate. Because if you don't have an incentive, then employees aren't going to participate. I'll just be perfectly honest with you.
And we have now, because we get a lot of thousands of dollars from Blue Cross Blue Shield and from ACCG, and what we're doing is we're using it to pay people to come in, to do yoga and all this kind of stuff. Maybe those funds need to go back to the employees because there are incentives that you guys have done a great job with trying to get during cookouts and barbecues, all kinds of incentives that we've done to get people to participate, and the participation has still been low.
Well, we have a number of employees that are participating in a number of the wellness activities. And yes, we do have yoga instructors that are coming in. We have a hip-hop class. But we also have, and I think this week, we're going to be announcing transformation winners where the employees will be receiving in hand some very large prizes for that. So the numbers are low. You're absolutely right. But I think the numbers have increased over the last year and a half because employees, and I'll be perfectly honest with you, they only want to participate if there is something in it for them, and that's not a negative. But there's got to be a prize for them. And so that's one thing that we've talked about internally. How can we continue to have our employees participate just to get them well? Sometimes we don't have to give away a fit bid for employees to participate because the end goal is to see a reduction to what we're paying in our costs so that this year, we don't have to come before the board saying, hey, there's going to be an increase to our premium cost. And now we've got to decide, is it something the board wants to take on or do we want to pass it on to the employees? If you all will remember, last year, we had an increase to our health insurance costs. The board, thank you, and we really appreciate it, elected to take on all of that cost. But we also said during our budget meetings, and we also said during insurance talks, that we've got to put something in place so that, one, we can get our employees healthier, but, two, so that they can be responsible for the increase in costs because that's not something that we will continue to be able to do. We have to not only manage our employees, but we also have a county that we have to run, and we have services. And so when we go to increase that insurance cost and the board takes that cost on, we've got to go back then and determine, okay, what are we going to have to cut? Because we've elected to take it on. And it's more or less making employees more responsible for their health. And that's, that's the whole idea here.
Let me just make one of, one of the points, please. We talk each year, when we have discussions with the board regarding renewing our medical plan coverages, what can we do? And I think we all agreed last year, when we went through that process, is that we have to put some other measures in place. We have chosen not to use the stick method, but the carrot method, quite frankly. We want to put some incentives out there. We have wellness funds, as Ms. Collins says, that have been provided to us from our carriers as incentives, which we can use that to offset any costs that may be associated with this program. So for us, we wanted to put the stick out there. We've got two requirements that are quite easy to do. Doesn't require a lot of extra. All we're asking the employees to do is to get a physical or participate in the biometric screening event, which we will offer here at the county, and go online and take a health risk assessment. Once you take that assessment, you've got the tools needed for you to address any particular health issues or concerns that you may have. Also, our benefits broker is also here, Mr. Gases. One of the things that his team provides also to us, at least on a quarterly basis, is utilization information regarding our health plan coverage. And we don't have, we're not violating any privacy issues, but we do know that we have a number of employees and family, covered family members that have some very serious health situations that we need to somehow figure out how to address. Putting these kinds of programs in place will allow the employees to have the information needed to start addressing some of those issues. If you take the health risk assessment, once you've had your physical and you see that you have a high blood pressure problem or you have a cholesterol problem, or you have a weight issue, or whatever the issue is, there are a number of programs that are out there that can address these issues. All we're doing is asking employees to put themselves in a better position to know what your risk factors are. And now, here are some tools, as Ms. Collins said, to go out and address these risk factors.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Clemens?
I would like to see what the impact this will have on the budget and if we could get some type of data about what you guys have done and how you've already affected the premium. The wellness program will continue without us giving $480 because although the employees won't get cash, they won't pay forty dollars. We will pay forty dollars. So we're still increasing funding. And I just think this is very blind without us knowing. Okay, I'm not saying not do it, but I don't know what that amount looks like, like $480. If half of the employees elect to do this, what does that look like for the budget? And you can't bring us something without telling us how we're going to fund it. I've sat in budget meetings and tried to figure out, how are we going to fund this stuff? Don't give the employees something and then take it back. Let's talk about how we're going to fund it. What does it look like? And is this something that we can commit to? You just bring it to us and say, and then you keep mixing the wellness program in with a $480 incentive. We're going to have the wellness program. We're supporting the wellness program. All around the state, we're getting funding, free money, to support the wellness program. Everybody, every county is getting that. But this extra $480 is something totally different. And we don't need to say, well, if you don't vote for the $480, then you're not supporting wellness. That is totally not true, and it shouldn't be here like this. And I don't like the way that looks. So.
Go ahead.
And Commissioner Clemens, I clearly hear what you're saying, but I think that what we need to understand is that we've got to start somewhere with, with our employees. And we can certainly provide to you all the numbers, if I'm hearing you clearly, in terms of what, in terms of what impact it'll have on the budget. But I think what's most important is, right now, we have about twelve percent of our employees that participate in our wellness fairs that we have. We add this incentive, and employees are, will hopefully participate in the wellness activities. But also, think about those employees that may have high blood pressure, that they don't know that they have high blood pressure. And we're paying out monies for them to have their medications. And so, irregardless of this incentive program being in place, we're still paying out more because those employees aren't taking care of themselves. They aren't aware that they have high blood pressure. We have employees that are walking around that may be diabetic and aren't aware of it. And so this is one, again, and I think the most important thing is, we're striving to get our employees healthy. And we're tying it to the wellness component simply because that's the first step to getting your employees healthy. I will tell you, wellness programs are very successful if, if you make sure that you get the buy-in from the employees. And again, we wanted to make sure that we were structuring our incentive program where we weren't penalizing anyone. There are a number of programs out there that if you don't participate, then you pay a higher rate for your premium costs. What we're saying is, whatever the premium cost is going to be, that's what it's going to be. But if you elect to do one, two, three, or one and two, then you'll see a reduction in that cost. We can certainly provide to you costs in terms of what impact it'll have on the budget. But I think ultimately, regardless of us putting this incentive program in place, until our employees become healthier and participate in wellness activities, every year, we're going to continue to see an increase in our insurance costs.
All right. Well, my question was along the lines of, I know I've too sat in the budget meetings, and when we spoke about insurance, we saw a very strong increase of claims, which meant that our employees were not healthy. I do see this as an incentive, that if we can get employees to go and at least visit the doctor or at least get some indicators that they need to take care of themselves, then that definitely will help them in the long run because it's really about keeping the employees healthy. The question that I do have is, if we are concerned about our employees, why are we not allowing and offering this to all employees? I understand, one, benefit per family, but if we have employees that are here and they're in the same family, why not allow each employee to have that benefit? Because we care about them as well. So, again, it's about employees. I understand that this is a voluntary process. Yes, I do agree that we've got to think about the financial aspect of it. But at the same point, our goal is to help our employees to be healthy. And, yes, I see, understand the benefit of the wellness program. But again, how do we get more involvement of people being responsible for their own care and so forth? So that's the question that I have. Why not offer it to all employees? And then, again, I understand the benefit, that we're not offering it to other family members, but employees should get that benefit. So, help me understand that.
Chair Wood, that's a great question. There are a number of incentive programs that exist that we actually looked at. And typically, what happens is, the first year, you offer whatever your baseline is, and this year, we've selected these two items. The next year, you offer one more thing. The next year, you offer something different. And so each year, it can progress up into four and five years. One of the options, obviously, would have been to offer this to every employee, whether they were in a family with another employee or not. However, as Commissioner Clemens has stated, there is an impact on the budget. And so we did not want to put that provision in the first year until we go through the first year to see how, how it actually impacts our budget. We know that some of the impact will be offset, as Ms. Collins said, by the wellness funding that can be used to offset some of this. But until we see how many employees actually are going to participate in this program, we did not want to include that additional possibility of the additional impact for the first year. If we decide for the second year, we want to go back in and do that, we absolutely can. But in abundance of, let's take a conservative approach initially, and then we can go in year two, whatever that additional incentive is, we'll add that. Year three, we'll add that, and so on each year. But that's typically how these programs progress.
Well, I agree that we do need to have some financial data that at least gives us a picture of how much would it be for every employee? And then the other scenarios that could potentially impact it. So, again, I think I need more information in the financial aspect as well. But understanding that this is a good program, this is not an unfamiliar program because I understand the benefits of what it will do long-term if employees take advantage of it and definitely take care of themselves as a result of those annual exams and biometric tests. Okay, other questions? Commissioner Barnes?
I kind of follow y'all's lead on this thing. I, I see some benefits to this, but I've got to know more about the financial part of it, how it's going to affect our budget.
Let me just also, I'm sorry, Commissioner Barnes. Let me just also mention, the timing of the, of bringing this to the board at this time is so that we can allow the employees an opportunity to get the activities done. The process that we're in right now is the RFP process for our benefits coverage for next year. Unfortunately, the timing of that, getting in the RFP, the proposals, bringing them back, vetting them with the team, the county manager's team, as well as with you, with you all, the Board of Commissioners, that process will take longer than we would have to allow employees to actually go in and do the biometric screening and their physicals. So in the essence of time, what we wanted to do was see if we could get an approval for the program itself. The budget part of it will come during the RFP process, when that's presented by Mr. Gases' team.
Of the questions and comments, I've got another comment as well, but we got others that want to talk. So Commissioner Wilson, welcome to Commissioner Prince. And if you don't cover my question, I've got another question. Okay, Commissioner Wilson.
I understand what we're trying to do, and I think it's, I think it's a great idea. We, we want to make sure that employees are helped. We want to reduce premiums, but when we do all that, we're also going to reduce sick time. It's a great program, but my question is, who's using this program now and that can say it's working for them, anybody in the metro area?
So, again, I, we work with one county in particular that I'm working hand-in-hand with is Forsyth County. They have been working diligently on their wellness program for at least five to six years. And as of now, they have the same program in place, and they have ninety-eight percent participation from their employees. They are seeing a reduction just in terms of their claims utilization that Doris mentioned. Every year, we get a report. They have a similar structure in terms of two carriers, as you all have. And so we're starting to really see, in terms of not only just the claims utilization or the risk level, I should say, of their employees decreasing, we're also seeing that education process that I talked about as well in terms of using urgent care versus the ER, going in and getting their annual physical. We're really starting to see that change as well. And then there are other counties out there, like Clayton County, seeing the same thing in terms of their participation. And then I also work with Cobb County. And so they're seeing around that same number, that same high number of employees participating in it, working for them.
Okay, Commissioner Prince, and then Commissioner Clemens, and then myself.
Let's circle back around to the money here. I'm not, I'm not understanding this, and that's very concerning when I don't understand something, because I can't explain it to my constituents. Take me through, John Q employee signs up for this and gets the $480 a month, a year total. Where does that money come from?
You're asking me?
Yes.
So, the, John Q signs up. John Q had, let's say, John Q had a physical in May of 2017. Then he will then go in through, now that he knows that he needs to have a health risk, take the health risk assessment, he will take the health risk assessment. And then Henry County will then, Doris will get a report saying that John Q satisfied both requirements and now is eligible for that $480. So then, now he will see a reduction of forty dollars per month from his paycheck that once Doris and the county manager and all of you decide how that will look, it would be a forty-dollar differential on the, on you all's budget in terms of how would you like to cover it. Part of that can be from ACCG, as well as from wellness incentives from the carriers themselves, which you get a substantial amount that you can use to subset, to offset that cost. And so now, the question will be, and I'm not sure if I can personally answer, how will the county itself cover that remaining amount, whatever that remaining amount is? And so initially, it was said that you don't want to penalize by raising the premiums this year, but that is also an option out there that some counties do use, and I'm just speaking just from my experience, that they do raise that premium to make it cost-neutral. And so you won't see a hit on the budget side. And that's something that you may, may consider.
You're absolutely correct in that, recall, when we set the premium costs for our employees, that is set by the board. So once, and at this point, there are still a lot of unknowns because we have an RFP that's out, and we don't know what, what the cost will be in terms of whichever carrier we select to provide health insurance for the employees. But keep in mind, every year, when the budget is presented to you all, we show you different numbers. If we were going to charge the employees fifty percent, twenty-five percent, seventy-five percent, so you all will have to determine what that cost will be. So you all will set what the cost will be. And Ayana is absolutely correct in that it could be revenue-neutral if we decide that we're going to set the cost at this amount, so that it will have no impact on the budget. Now, if the board elects to keep the cost as it is, based on what we're charging employees today, and we see an increase from the carriers that come in, then the board will have to decide. Do we want to increase the amount that the employees pay? And then whatever the county's contribution is, increases or remains the same? Or if the employees will take on that additional cost? But keep in mind, you all set that cost. And so we can provide you all numbers, but I don't know that the numbers that you're looking for are going to be the numbers that you need to see until those RFPs come in because we don't know what the final cost will be. What's most important is that we've got to get this in front of the actual open enrollment because there is no way that we can do open enrollment and have this in place or not have this in place. If we don't do it, then we're not going to be able to do it this cycle. And that was one of the things that we committed to when we adopted our insurance plan last year. Because I think I heard from the board, we're going to go ahead and take on the increased cost, but we've got to look, and I can't remember, board members were asking, what about biometric screening? What are we doing to make sure that our employees recognize that their health is most important? And so that's one of the reasons why we're bringing it to you all. And so that's one of the reasons why we're bringing it to you all. The timing for us is on schedule because right now, we're in January. We could not have done anything prior to because we do need to look at where we are in terms of our claims. And I think what's important, and I may have Mike come up and explain it, because I think there may be some crossing of terminology when we talk about increase in premium and increase in claims. So I want Mike, if you all don't mind, to kind of give us, update you all on that. I know Commissioner Clemens, it looks like you're saying some.
Yeah. I've got something to deal with. Commissioner Prince has the floor right now, so let's let him finish, and then we'll move next.
Because here's what I'm looking at, but let's do some short math. Okay, $480 a year per employee, we have roughly, what, 1,600 employees? You multiply those together, $768,000? I mean, that's a hefty number. And I don't, you guys, we don't seem to be speaking the same language right now. I'm not understanding where is this money going to come from? And back to my John Q employee, does this mean when they say credit, does this mean that they get an increase of $40 a month that the county is paying back to them, the $40 a month?
They will.
Stay on topic? I just want to talk about the money right now. I know the program works, it's fantastic, great. Talk to me about this money, where it's coming from. Please explain it to me so I can understand it.
Commissioner Prince, just as a clarification, we have about 1,400 employees, roughly, 1,400 employees that are actually on our medical program right now. So we're talking, that would be the starting point. The other part of that, when you put incentive programs in place generally, everyone that's on the program won't participate, so we don't know what that number's going to look like if this is our first year doing it. So let's just say 60% participate in it. So that would be, 60% of 1,400 would be the number that we're starting with. The other piece is, we are proposing $40, but we don't have to use $40, we can use $25, we can use whatever amount that you all think, if we want to do the incentive, but we don't want to do 40, then let's use 30 or let's use 25. But the reason we proposed 40 was because we wanted the number to be enough to actually incent people to participate. With the research that's been given, other places that have used incentives, until they got to a certain point where the employees felt like there was a real benefit to them, they wouldn't participate in the program. Once it got to that level, then they would participate. So we saw everything from 25 to 50. So we did propose 40, but it doesn't have to be 40. If that's more of a concern to you, then we can take a more conservative approach and take it back also. Also, Mike, Mr. Gass wanted to talk a little bit about the premium side of it, so if he could come down and address that part.
My question. Where does the money come from?
Let me try to answer that directly. Real case scenario now, you charge a family $160 roughly a month for family coverage. If that stays the same, if you get a rate increase this year, and you take it on and you leave that the same, that $40 comes, affects the budget, obviously 40 times 12 is 480, times if 1,000 people do it, $480,000. Revenue neutral means if you have an increase and you charge a family $200, say, we can't accept this anymore, we've got to go up on what we charge. For example, you could say it's going to be $200, but when you do all this, it comes back to 160. You can move the numbers wherever you like to stay revenue-neutral, but in reality, if 1,000 people do it, it affects the budget $480,000.
Thank you.
If exactly what you're saying, if you don't charge them any more than you've been charging, yes, it hits the budget head-on.
Thank you.
One other thing, please, I want to say, be careful when you say, lower our premiums because then later, people will say, well, you said if we did a clinic or if we did wellness, our premiums would go down. You can lower your rate increases. If you notice historically in the medical field, premiums are going up, costs are going up, medical care's not going to get cheaper. So what you hope to do is get your increase, if you have an increase, lowered. You know, it's going to be hard to go backwards. You don't hear of anybody saying our premiums went down 10, 15%. So you're trying to get claims in control, when you control the claims, you can control the premiums.
All right, Commissioner Prince, are you, any other questions? Okay, Commissioner Clemens. And so back to the other counties that are using this, other counties are doing the health risk assessment and doing both, the biometric screening and both, and they're not giving cash incentives. So my question is, is that we can approve this today and take out the cash incentive, which is something we can come back and look at at a later time, how we're going to incentivize this program, but John Q, is that the dude that we've been talking, John Q can enroll in this program and not have any additional incentives, other than incentives that we get from the monies that we already get. We don't have to have additional effects on our county budget to have this program. And that's the part we're confusing, the RFPs in here, and we're talking to all this stuff. We want to have this in place for the RFPs, and we can do this with the, having the biometric and the health risk screening without encumbering the budget and adding this cash incentive today.
You already have that. They don't have to enroll in anything.
Right, so this is really only about $480 incentive. So, but the way it was presented to the board a few minutes ago, and Cheryl, I would appreciate if our directors would not come and say, we've got to do it today, because we already have this in place. Today is really about, do we want to give a $480 incentive? We need to talk about what that money looks like, and today is not a rush to do that. And it's not going to, I mean, our premiums are going to be reduced because our employees are enrolling in this. We do have great programs that our HR department is doing with the wellness program, so let's see some results from that before we start bringing on additional fees to this board. And for some reason, it's like, if you don't do this today, you can't get this program without doing the 480, and we're already in this program.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Clemens, and I apologize for the confusion, but the counties that I do mention do offer a premium reduction, so they do offer some sort of cash incentive for their program.
Right, but it may not be necessarily 480, so that's the whole concern today. We don't have to agree to 480 today, we need to talk about it. As one commissioner said, maybe this is a work study, or we talk about what the amount is before we come up here and somebody give us the amount.
I think the idea is, we've got 12% of the population, the people participating now.
We need to readdress that, we need to look at that program.
We try, and I'm not speaking out of turn, we try every year, we have benefit fairs, we have incentives, we have prizes, we try every year to increase it. And either way, it's okay, I mean, whatever, whatever the board decides to do. I'm just, the program is there, but to get people to participate more, other counties have done a financial incentive. You could give 100 people today a ticket to go get a free exam at Piedmont or Emory, and here is a free exam, and they won't go. So that's just people, they just don't like doing it.
Okay, other questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Wilson?
Now, last year, we was talking about a clinic that was going to do the same thing. It was going to reduce, get employees healthier, we was going to reduce premiums, we was going to reduce visits to the doctor. So what happened with the clinic?
That is still something that internally that we are discussing, we've already charged our consultant with looking at a proposal to bring back to county management so that we can present it to the board. But again, I think what's most important is that during the adoption of our budget on last, during last year, and when we were talking about discussing our insurance premium, our insurance cost, because we had a substantial increase last year, one of the directives that this board gave to staff was to go back, be innovative, look at ideas, and bring us some recommendations in terms of what can we do to reduce our claims. I will tell you, you will not get employees to participate if there is not a benefit for those employees. They're not going to do it. It's apparent because of the 12% turnout that we have for our health fares. Employees have to know that there is some type of incentive in it for them. Whether we like that or not, that is, that's the culture that we have here. Now, I will tell you, this is the first step to what we want to make this entire program. I think what's also important is that we need to start somewhere. We've got to get something out there so that the employees recognize that every year, because I'll be honest with you, I would be shocked if in the next five, six, seven years, you all in this board receives a decrease to what our insurance cost is going to be. It's not going to happen. I can tell you right now, we're already getting some numbers in, and I can tell you, there will be an increase in what we pay for insurance costs. And a lot of that is attributed to employees who are not going to the doctors. We have employees that they will, they're sick Monday through Friday, and then on Saturday, they're at the emergency room. And employees believe I'm paying my $200 copay, and that's the only cost. But a $200 visit to the emergency room costs the county $10,000, and it's for simple things that they're not going to their primary care physician to get checked. It's high blood pressure, it's diabetes, it's cholesterol. So before we pull the trigger on a clinic, we need to start small so that we can figure out, hey, are we going to get the participation from employees? I do believe the employees are ready for the clinic, but there is a cost to establishing a clinic, and it goes to some of the things and the questions that you all are raising now. We don't want to open a clinic and then next year say, well, we can't continue to open the clinic because we didn't budget for it. And so that takes a little more time in terms of what we're going to do. I know initially, when we were set to open a clinic, there was a conversation, there was information provided to the board that once we opened the clinic, you would see a reduction in your cost. I am here to tell you, a clinic does not reduce your cost. It does not, and I want the board to understand that. The clinic would be a service that we're providing to our employees at no cost if we decide to go down that model, and then we're going to have the same conversations again because when we open a clinic, it's going to cost the county money to open a clinic. You have prescriptions or drugs that were pharmaceuticals that will be there, you have doctors that have to be paid, and if we want to provide that as an incentive to the employees, there, it's going to cost money. So the clinic is not off the table, this is just the initial first step that we committed to bring to this board, and that was the reason why it's coming to the board at this time.
Anything else, Commissioner Wilson, Commissioner Barn, and I've got a comment as well.
Yes, Ms. Matthews, do you have any projections now on what our increase is going to be?
At this time, we do not have any information. I think we're still going through the RFP process. Mr. Gass is in his office, is actually handling that information. So if the board would like for Mr. Gass to come back and speak to that, he certainly, certainly can.
Okay.
The only other thing I'd say, this is a very important decision for us to make. I don't think we can speculate on how many employees are going to participate, and I don't know if Forsyth has the same amount of employees that we have or not, but I'd like to see this matter taken up at a special call meeting, a workshop, and have more information presented to all of us so we can make a good decision on this. It's my thought.
Okay. We've heard some comments, and my comment is, I'm familiar with this program and a previous career, and it does work. But I do agree that what this board obviously needs is just a full package of how the financials are going to impact the bottom line, because that's really what we're talking about. And I do hope for our employees that are out there, that we do are very concerned about health and wellness, and we already glad to see that we're talking about where we're going to go next time, because again, this board last year took a bold move and absorbed all of those insurance increases last year. And so if the insurance is going to increase again this year predictable, and then potentially, you've got to look at, you know, the benefits to these program that we're talking about, we've got to have that full picture. So I hear that you're, again, trying to address this in a timely manner, but we've got to have, you know, more information and to be able to get some of these questions really understood for something so major like this. So I just think that, again, it's a good program, but we've got to have more information in a timely manner, you know, again, as we move forward. So that's my thought. Any other questions? You want to make some comments?
No, just additional comment. What we can do is, I'll recommend, if the board will accept, that we table this item until we can provide additional information to the board, and try to schedule a workshop between now and the next meeting to have the questions answered that you all have posed.
All right, and then one other thing, it would be good to get an idea of how many employees are interested. I don't know how you can gather that type of information. But again, I understand the benefits, and I appreciate you coming to share what has happened with other agencies, and I do agree that it does increase participation. But again, that's just a question that could be addressed even when we come back. So we've heard, any other questions or comments from the board? All right, the floor is now open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we table this item.
We have a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further questions or comments? All in favor to table this and have a discussion later? Bold in favor. Any opposed to that motion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll now move to our next item, a resolution from Senior Services regarding One Care Health Services for Senior Services and Home Service Program. And we welcome Ms. Diane Reed for that presentation.
Good morning, Chair, members of the board.
Good morning.
As you're aware, the Senior Services Department provides a menu of services to senior adults in their homes that need those services. We recently issued an RFP for a lastance agency to provide those services. We have received proposals and reviewed and evaluated, and it is my request today that the board agree to award the contract to One Care Health Services.
Okay, you've heard the presentation. Are there any questions regarding this proposal? Okay, Commissioner Clemens, and then Commissioner Prince. Good morning, Ms. Reed.
Good morning.
Is there any data that they keep up with about how many of our seniors they're servicing in the homes in the county, and whether, you know, which, are they broken down by districts?
I don't have the information about how they're broken down by district with me. I could probably tell you how many we are serving by district. I could also share how many people may be on a waiting list and how that's broken down by district.
Right.
But just on the surface, it is county-wide. I would say probably our largest concentration may be in the north end of the county, Stockbridge and Fairview.
Okay. I know that we have quite a few people that are on the waiting list.
Yes, ma'am.
In our community, and very concerned about how we can get them serviced and, you know, how we can find more funding for that, so.
I agree, I share that concern. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Prince?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing this to us. My question this morning, is this the One Care Health Service that we switched, was it two years ago or last year, over from, I think our employees were doing it, and then we switched over to a private company?
Yes.
My question is, how is this going? Because when we did this, I said I was going to review this when it came back up, so here we are. Are they providing the services, everybody? Good?
Just to summarize, you are correct, the bulk of our homemaker services that do not require licensure are provided by our in-house staff. That is the bulk of the service. We went into contract last year with an agency called ResCare. We are seeking to enter in a contract with another agency. I would say the performance wasn't up to our standards.
Okay, that's what I had heard, so just clarifying that, so.
Questions for comments? Okay, Commissioner Clemens. And that goes back to what I was discussing, and maybe we can just have a communication, a little meeting later about it, but I really want to see, you know, more accountability from the people that are getting paid to go into the homes of our seniors, because that's a huge population, and our seniors are growing in Henry County. So we want to make sure that we are providing that care, and as much as we're looking out for children in parks, I want to make sure that we're looking out for those seniors as well. So I would really like to see how you're going to put some things in place to make sure that there's some accountability to the people that are going into the homes, and that over the year, that there's some reports being brought back to the board about who they're servicing, how many they're servicing, and how they're being accountable to the seniors in the community.
Absolutely, very good. That was my comment as well, so thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, we've heard the presentation now, the floor is now open for a motion.
Move to the floor.
We have a motion. A second. And a second. Any further questions or comments or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, the resolution passed.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we look forward to that update as well. All right, we'll now move into our next resolution from the Transit Department regarding the purchase of a 20-passenger ADA shuttle bus through the Federal Transit Administration Grant. So, good morning, Mr. Shaw.
Good morning, madam Chair and Commissioners. I asked the board to approve a purchase for a 20-passenger Star Trans 2 shuttle bus that will cost approximately $79,280.92. This will be purchased through the FTA grant. Our 20% match for Henry County cost will be $15,856.18. That is in my budget this year. This vehicle will be used to start a fixed route in Henry County. That is in the planning stages as we speak.
Thank you. We've heard the presentation, are there any questions or comments? I have one question, does your budget also provide for the driver of this shuttle bus?
We will start, we'll do like a pilot route, I will have to use a driver that I have currently in staff, just to start this out, to see how this goes.
Okay.
It would be great to have additional drivers within my department, that is something that, you know, right now, we do have a short staff.
Okay, so you do have the funding for even an additional driver?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, the floor is now open for a motion.
So move.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Further questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? The resolution now passes. Thank you. All right, we'll now move into our next item in Technology Services regarding the resolution to approve the licensing and implementation of the Cisco Voice Infrastructure Upgrade.
Good morning, Chair and Board Members.
Good morning.
The item before you would allow Technology Services to upgrade our current voice systems, phone systems, basically inside the county that are 15 years old and have fallen off support from Cisco. They're just too old to continue supporting. We recommend going through licensing and implementation of Cisco's current voice infrastructure from our current provider, SPS, who is of course Cisco's support provider. The pricing is priced through Georgia State Contract. The cost of this system is spread over five years with payments of $102,493 via the Cisco Systems capital financing at a rate of 2.99%. Technology Services has this first year is already budgeted in this current year's budget, and we will include it in the future budgets each year. This proposal includes hardware, software, professional services, and annual maintenance for the new Cisco Voice Infrastructure System. It will definitely make our new phone system up to date currently with new capabilities, flexibility, providing several upgrades in a new digital solution. Again, this is a budgeted item. We already have money in Technology Services. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
You've heard the presentation. Are there any questions or comments? I do have one question. Under the terms and conditions for the SPS agreement, it said that the service maintenance window was valid for 30 days. Is that normally standard for such an agreement?
This actually provides service and annual maintenance for five years.
Five years, okay. I was looking at the strategic products and services.
Well, SPS provides the service for Cisco.
Got it, okay, thank you. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? You've heard the presentation. The floor is now open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Heard a motion.
Second.
And a second. Questions or comments or concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? The resolution passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to our next item from the County Manager regarding a resolution approving the master plan for Nash Farm, and we're inviting our County Manager, Sherri Hobson Matthews, for that presentation.
Good morning, Chair and Board Members. You have a resolution in front of you this morning authorizing the approval of a master plan for Nash Farm Park. Back in 2009, the Board of Commissioners solicited proposals for the development of Nash Farm Park, because there was a lot of conversation in creating a regional park concept after the county acquired the property. The purpose of the development of the master plan was for a number of reasons, and in your package, you should have a conceptual plan which was prepared, and I'll place it on the overhead just as I walk through the presentation. As you can see from the conceptual drawing, the purpose for Nash Farm Park was to incorporate walking trails, parking lots, playgrounds, the conversion of the activity barn into an activity building, add bike trails, an equestrian trail, and then also incorporate a covered pavilion and a garden. Over the last couple of years, the park has been used for various recreational activities, and there has continued to be an increase in the demand on the use of the facility. Again, what staff wants to do is, we're in the process of developing some capital project needs countywide, and what we want to do is make sure that going forward, when we're developing those project lists, that we have a master plan in place for some of our facilities in which we're looking to add the capital needs. What you have in front of you this morning is a resolution to adopt the master plan that we are presenting, and what the resolution states is that by adopting the master plan, the county management staff, in consultation with the Parks and Rec Staff and Advisory Board, will begin to prioritize project needs as identified in the plan. I do want to make sure that I explain that this plan, if you'll notice, there are several items that are kinda hatched to the side. One is a road corridor, a bandstand, a playground, a heirloom garden, trailhead, corporate pavilion, heirloom garden, and then on the other side, you see the open lawn and the parking area. Those are all of the recommendations that were provided in the overall master plan. If you'll notice on the plan, there are also buildings that are delineated in red. Those are the buildings that are currently on the property, and for the development of the project, those were delineated for those purposes so that we could identify what's already on the ground. What we're looking to do is to start prioritizing the items that are hatched out to the left and right of the plan, and this resolution would give us the ability to start moving forward with the master plan. I know there's been several questions this morning regarding how do we pay for everything that we're bringing to you all, so I would like to ask the board if this resolution is passed, if you all would be amenable to adding an additional, whereas, that 20% of the revenues collected from events held at Nash Farm be placed in the existing Nash Farm project account to fund capital project needs, once those capital project needs are identified and then presented to the board for approval. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, we've heard the presentation. The floor is now open for questions and comments. Okay, Commissioner Barm, then Commissioner Prince.
Looking at the plan here, it looks like the historic battlefield is still set aside, and my question is, could we declare this perpetual green space, that it would be perpetual green space, so it would be protected years and years down the road?
Well, I think certainly the board is part of whatever motion is made. If that is the intent of the board, yes. But I think what's important is, I want you all to understand what's delineated, and the battlefield and everything is still delineated on there, because that is what is currently on the ground. That was what was currently on the ground at the time that the plan was developed. So if it is the will of the board to amend this resolution and add any additional language, you all certainly have the ability to do that. What I would like to do is explain that we want to make sure that we have some type of framework so that going forward, when we're making improvements, not only at Nash Farm, but all of our parks, that we have some type of plan in place, and that is one thing that we're working on internally as a staff, charging our advisory board with making sure that all of our park facilities, that we have a master plan for each park. What I've noticed is that when we're developing our capital project list, it's just based on what we need for the moment, and I think what helps us is if we have a plan in place so that we can follow that plan and that boards after board after board will know what the intentions are. I think it's also important, when you start talking about stakeholders and individuals that want to invest in our community, the first thing they typically ask is, do you have a plan in place? And so this is one of many plans that will be coming to the board for future approval so that we can make sure that going forward, we have a plan in place for staff.
Okay, Commissioner Prince, then Commissioner Wilson.
Sherri, can you show the other side of that sheet? And this is for the constituents so they can look through. There seems to be a little confusion of how this all came about. You know, Nash Farms have been an absolute political football here recently, and when all this came up about Nash Farms, I looked back through, found this master plan, as the other commissioners did as well, and have been trying to get this on the agenda for, what, six months at least? There's nothing that, I really looked at this to go back to before all the political stuff hit, to what the initial board back in '09 wanted to do with the park. This is what they bought it for, this is what it was intended, you know, it was supposed to be, and here we are, just implementing the plan that was done in '08 that the initial board wanted to do. Everything on there, there's been no changes. I'm completely fine with taking 20% of the revenue generated from this park and putting it back into the park. I think that only makes sense. Every element of the park is still on there from '09. There is no change. And what we've done is, we've tried to take the politics out of this and just go back to what the initial board wanted to see out there. So I just want the public to know this was not any kind of sneak vote or anybody bringing anything to the board that wasn't already on the table. I've been trying to get this done, and I think what's happened, my fellow commissioners have kindly got to that point too, that they realize, hey, this is a good plan, let's just stick with what the initial board was gonna do before. So I want everybody to know, you know, we, I understand this is a hot topic, and everybody's afraid to touch it, but this is the original plan. We're just implementing a plan that should've been implemented in '09. So I just want everybody to know that.
Commissioner Clemens.
Thank you, Sherri. Me personally, how much money do we owe Nash Farms?
Do you have that number? Give us one second.
I believe it's close to $2 million, is that correct?
It's about two point, but I don't wanna, give us one second.
Okay. But I can carry, I can, the exact number's not important. Yeah, the exact number's not important, but my point is, is we still owe a great deal of money on the property. So I think if we have a plan, we need to figure out a plan to pay for it. And once we get it paid for, then we'll come up with a plan, what we're gonna put on, how we're gonna pay for that. So to owe money on this property and then come up with a master plan and figure out how we're gonna pay for the master plan, I think we're kinda splitting, splitting up our responsibilities of taxpayer dollars.
2.5.
So we've got 2.5 million dollars owed on the property, so we're looking at 20% of the rentals to go toward improving it, but shouldn't we be looking at the, putting money toward the payment of the property before we start development? I, that's where I'm confused, so.
All right, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Wilson? All right, Commissioner Clemens.
I echo Commissioner Prince's sentiments on the master plan. I know that First Town Hall that I had this year, Commissioner Prince was there with me as well, and we presented this master plan to the community, and it was overwhelmingly accepted by the community. And when we talk about paying for the 2.5, it was $8 million worth of debt. So if you subtract the 2.5 from the $8 million, the county has never had to worry about how to pay for this debt, because the citizens of District 2 have paid all of the debt on Nash Farms Park and will continue to pay the debt on Nash Farms Park until the rest of this board decides that they will use their district impact fees to pay for this park. Right now, every dime has not come out of general funds to pay for Nash Farms Park, but every dime of the debt on Nash Farms Park has been paid by the citizens of District 2 through their impact fees. So there's no, there has been no improvement on this park, this master plan to give, to adopt this green space, that historic battlefield that talks about all the wonderful things that we can do in that green space and preserve in that space, has not been done. And District 2 citizens have continued, no one has stood up for this community, this district, about the monies of our impact fees going to pay for this. This is an opportunity, if we're gonna continue to let District 2 pay for it, let's put a master plan in place so that there's something out there to enjoy. And I appreciate Commissioner Wilson's concern, and I would love for the rest of this board, five, one, three, and four, to put your impact fees in and help pay for it, because District 2 didn't have a choice, we were indebted with this park, and our district has paid every dime for this park.
Yes, sir. Okay, Commissioner Holmes.
Isn't there a plan in place to pay for this park, for this debt to be paid off by 2021?
Yes, sir. And it's, is it 2021, Rod? The debt payoff? Yes, because if you recall, I think Mr. Alletta refinanced it, and we were able to shave some years off.
To reiterate Commissioner Clemens's request, I think this would be a wonderful opportunity for a county, this park has been sitting dormant for years. There's also been a lot of discussion regarding this being battlefield. We vetted this out for years. We know this was never a battlefield. We know that the battle actually took place at Lovejoy Station. So let's move forward with the master plan and make this a great asset for the county.
Thank you. All right, well, my question goes back to, one, I'm glad to hear that we're having some level of discussion, because this has been a big issue, a big hot topic since March of last year. There still are questions about the battlefield from some, and this plan seems to protect the battlefield, it seems, in my opinion, based on the back of it. So I'm just, you know, wondering, how is this going to continue to, you know, protect the interest of the history here in Henry County? And yes, I do agree that this is gonna be good to help bring in some family entertainment out there, because that's a great park out there and a great location. So when I look at the facilities that are highlighted in red, you know, again, for me, I haven't, wasn't here back in 2009, but is that gonna come later, or is this something just to begin the process for more details of the master plan? I'm trying to understand where exactly we are.
The existing structures, the intent of the resolution today is just to adopt the master plan based on the recommendations that are hatched to the left and right of the plan. Now, all of the existing structures, this resolution does not take into account doing anything with those facilities or with those structures. They will remain on the property. But I think what we're gonna have to do is allow our Parks and Rec Board and allow our Parks and Rec Department to prioritize what our needs are. Right now, we don't have a priority for what needs to happen out at Nash Farm, and to be honest, we don't have priorities for a lot of our facilities that we have in place. And so this is the initial first step. I will tell you, Nash Farm has been a hot topic, not only in the last two or three months, but four, five, six, seven, eight months, that we've talked about, what are we gonna do at Nash Farm? What are we gonna do at Nash Farm? We've had several requests from various groups that wanna go out and do work at the facility, and that's just not something that we as a county want to do, and obviously for liability purposes, but also because we have a plan that a board put in place. They hired a consultant to come in, because the intent when the property was purchased was to create a regional park. We've had individuals that have inquired about utilizing the facility for various events, and I think that this would be a huge first step in terms of creating that regional concept. I too share in the concerns that we do have one district that is contributing to the impact fees that are being paid, although it's being utilized by all residents within the county, and I think this is a huge first step to make it an all-inclusive park where it's being utilized by everyone that's here in the county, but also make it that regional park. There have been a number of grant opportunities that have been out there for our parks, for walking trails, and the first thing they ask in the grant application, do you have a master plan? And it's unfortunate that we don't have a countywide master plan, but I assure you that is something that we are looking at at the staff level. With any plan, it costs money, and in this case, this is the only master plan that's already been paid for that just has not been adopted by the board. So in 2009, the board elected, or 2008, the board hired this company, and 2009, the plan was completed, and it was never officially adopted. One thing that we've talked about internally with staff is that when we start developing what our priorities are for the county, it needs to be a part of an approved plan, and I think that's the direction that we've got to continue to go in. I did put in the resolution that this won't happen tomorrow. We'll start having conversations in our upcoming FY '19 budget, but at least we'll have a plan in place to say, okay, here are the priorities for our parks, and this is Nash Farm, these are some of the things that we're gonna look at doing in FY '19. These are some of the things we're gonna do in FY '20. So this, again, is just the beginning framework for the development of what's to happen at that park. Again, keeping in mind that we need to have a master plan for all of our parks. We, that's critical to us setting what our priorities are.
Right, and so my question, to clarify, are we approving both sides of this document? And this is what was approved, or at least introduced in 2009 by the consultants, and there's been no changes.
That is correct. And we are not recommending any changes to the master plan.
Okay. Okay, other questions or comments? Commissioner Barm?
Sherri, this 20% of the impact fees, how much that money is that gonna be?
Well, it's not gonna be 20% of the impact fees, because they're already paying that completely. So it'll be 20% of the revenues that are collected for individuals who utilize Nash Farm for various events.
Do you have any idea what those numbers are?
Do you have any idea what those numbers are?
We can, we can certainly provide that information.
I just wonder if it's enough to even do anything.
It's certainly going to be a starting point.
Okay, questions, okay, let's go to Commissioner Holmes, and then we'll come to Commissioner Wilson.
As we move forward to approve this, this park, are we seriously going to approve the word battlefield, even though there's no historic proof of this being an actual battlefield?
The way the resolution is presented, Commissioner Holmes, what we're recommending is to approve it based on what was submitted by the consultant team. So if there is a reference, then it will remain, because what we didn't want to do is come in and make any changes to the plan that was already completed. Again, what we do want to do is give the Parks and Rec Board and our park staff an opportunity, once this is approved, to go in and then make some recommendations to the board. The good thing about this is this resolution will approve the master plan, but it will also force it to come back if we are making changes to the master plan, and that would require board action.
All right, Commissioner Wilson.
I want to comment on Commissioner Clemmons about District Two putting all their impact fees into paying for the park. That is a Henry County Park, it's not a District Two Park. And I think it's responsible to the board to come together and see how we all can go together to, to try to put money toward the park. If it don't say District Two Park, that is a Henry County Park. So we, it's our responsibility as a board to see if we can, see how we can help reduce the debt on this park, so.
Very good. Other questions or comments from Mr. Clemmons?
I just want to say something about the back that says Historic Battlefield, and read it for the citizens that may not have access to this. We call, there's a percentage of the green space that's called Historic Battlefield. That says, maintain this pasture for historic reenactments, preservation of existing site conditions accessible for mulch trails, and restoration of agricultural pond for detention purposes and allow areas to naturalize. To call that area Historic Battlefield does not say that, that this is a Historic Battlefield Park or anything, but I, I don't see anything wrong with labeling that area as a Historic Battlefield. The main thing is that the name of the park has been, I think is the question. The front, the park is called Nash Farm Park. There is some resolutions that you can go back and pull where the board has considered it's Nash Farm Park, that's the name of the park. And the green space is what they're calling on this master plan, Historic Battlefield. That's no way of us stating that we are, we're saying or we're endorsing that this is a Historic Battlefield, but that area, in Area Two of this master plan, is called a Historic Battlefield for reenactment purposes, if someone wants to utilize the park for that, as well as anybody else can utilize that same space for family reunions or whatever else. I mean, that's what it's supposed to be for, and so that's just the name of that area.
All right, other questions or comments from the board? Here in none, the floor is now open for a motion.
I move to approve the Nash Farm Park master plan as a final master plan for the overall site.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Commissioner Clemmons, do you intend to include the twenty percent?
And include the twenty percent contributions from the further rentals of the park to go into the project funds balance.
We have a motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. The floor is now open for discussion and comment. Commissioner Prince, you were about to say something.
I was just going to second that I would approve Nash Farm Park and Battlefield, but Commissioner Holmes will be prepared.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move into our next item regarding, let me get there, regarding public comments. And at this time, we welcome all citizens to voice their county-related concerns and opinions which are not listed on the agenda. And all persons wishing to speak during the public comment section must sign in with the county clerk and complete the public comment speaker form prior to the beginning of the meeting to be recognized. We respect the First Amendment rights of each person who addresses the board, but we also ask citizens to please be respectful, and any concerns about an individual, board member, or employee, please address those appropriately with the commissioner or with the county manager respectively. Any persons who make personal, impertinent slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of the board, staff, or general public will be interrupted by the chair or any member of the board for disorderly conduct as a warning. And if the disorderly conduct continues, the chair or other board member will request the citizen to be excused from the meeting. So at this time, we'll look to our county clerk to advise of any public comments.
Sorry, there are no public comments tonight.
Okay, there are no public comments for today. We will now then move to the next agenda item regarding the approval of minutes for the December fourth call meeting, for the December fifth regular meeting, for the December fifth call meeting, and also the December fifteenth call meeting. Are there any questions or revisions regarding those minutes for those meetings? Here in none, the floor is now open for a motion. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? We'll now move into the commission and chair comments. At this time, we'll pause and see if there is any comments from anyone. Okay, and I'll have one as well, go ahead, Commissioner Clemmons.
I just want to mention the issue that, that came up on the news a couple of weeks ago about our fire department. I don't want us to ignore the elephant in the room and to say that as a commissioner, I recognize the risk of staffing our fire engines with a small crew. And whatever we need to do as a board, I would like to be committed to making sure that we don't have crews out there with less than three men on them, and somehow we need to start talking about that and addressing that, and thank the fire department for doing the best that they can with overtime fees and running out of overtime fees and having to pull in people. I know that we've got two recruit schools in that we're waiting for those guys to come out, but this is an important issue, and I want the fire department to know that it is not going to go overlooked. And I'm sure that this board is one hundred percent behind public safety and what we need to do to staff our fire department.
Okay, Commissioner Prince.
Chair, county manager. Would, in the next meeting, would, could you have someone from the fire department please come out and speak to this? As I, as I don't feel that that was an accurate representation of exactly what's going on in the fire department. There's been no communication, as I understand, between the, what were they calling it, the union, yes, and you, the union and me. I have asked questions and then about what was going on, and the questions were never answered. And then I get calls that there's something on WSB, and I don't even know what they're talking about. So it's important that we have communication, it goes both ways. But would you please have someone here from the fire department to kind of address how we run calls? Because again, we can look at documentation and, and call recommendations necessary and present things in a way that is not flattering or maybe not exactly a hundred percent true. But I'm familiar with now the fire department, how they run, and it's not that cut and dry. So could you get somebody from the fire department here at the next meeting? Let's do, kind of like we do with the police department, if you will, go over what's taken place, what's happened. I mean, I can go over it real quick, but I, I would rather somebody from the fire department come and speak to that, to that end.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Holmes.
You know, lately, you know, I've, I've heard a few things either from citizens or on the news and as a commissioner. If, if there's something as important as a police incident in front of a store or the issue that we're having with the fire department, I don't want to hear it from the news or a citizen or anybody like that. I think I should be one of the first people to know what's going on, so I can, so I can communicate with citizens that approach me. I've been here for eight years, and when something happens, I get a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails from citizens reporting to me what I should already know. And so before this becomes the new normal, I think as a board and as a county, we should up the lines of communication and communicate with commissioners, so we're not caught off guard when these kinds of things come to us from citizens or from, from the news. So if, if there's a way we can put a protocol in place where everybody is contacted so that we know what's going on, that would be great.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Commissioner Holmes, I too was caught off guard in terms of the news report from Channel Two. I actually was at home, and at eleven o'clock, lo and behold, they talk about a county not having adequate coverage. And I never in a thousand years would have thought they were going to say Henry County. And I think at that time, it was about eleven o'clock that night, and I sent an email to all the board, making you all aware that something had hit the news, and we were working to provide a response. We did provide a response back to Channel Two with the facts, and obviously, whatever our facts were, it wasn't newsworthy, because it was actually the truth. We will be prepared to present something to the board, but I do recognize the need to make sure that when things of this nature and any other nature, that we do make sure that we bring it to the board. The unfortunate part is a lot of times I hear it at the same time that you all hear it. And so I've got to make sure that if something happens at the staff level, that they are making sure that they're communicating that information to us. But a lot of times, Channel Two did not, or the, the union individual did not reach out to either myself or Mr. Johnson. And so we too were caught off guard in that, that regard.
It shouldn't even hit the news first. I mean, the news, they're calling me on a regular basi, basis, asking me information about what's going on in the county. I can't even answer the question, it's embarrassing. So please, whatever we need to do, we need to up the lines of communication.
We will do.
All right, Commissioner Holmes, anything else? Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
I agree with you, sir, I think it was, it was shocking me as well. But what I got out of the news story, that somebody's not communicating with the people that's on the news, because we have dumped a lot of money into the fire service this year, and in the last three years, we dumped like twenty-six million dollars. So, but according to the news story, they had redheaded Stepchild, but that's not true. So if we're going to provide information on the news, let's put at, let's put good information, because somebody's not doing the homework, or somebody's not transferring good information. So, and I didn't get a phone call either from anybody to see, what's your thoughts on this? And where are we going from here? So I, I took it as a, I took it as a blow as well, so. But we do support our fire service, our whole public safety. We, we've dumped a lot of money into it, don't mean it's going to stop. But to get that story from the department I worked with for years, that's devastating for the, for the board. So, and, and our staff as well. So I think, I think the, the fire department administration needs to communicate with their union. Y'all need to let them know what you're getting, what you're not getting. You need to let them know what your plan is, because obviously, your union rep and our fire department administration, y'all not communicating, so.
All right, any other questions or comments? Commissioner Clemmons.
I would just like to say in our staff defense, and I learned this the hard way. The media reports what they think is news. They don't always look to report what is good, that is for us to toot our own horns. So we have to look at, if we're doing all this good stuff, which we are, how are we disseminating that information out to the public and make sure that we're continuing to do that? And to have a rebuttal that corrects what they thought was great news is not what they're looking for. So a lot of times, they may not come back to us and say, okay, so, you know, they're not trying to try this case in the news. They just want to put out whatever they think people will look at. It's almost like a reality show, so what we can do is to toot our horns a little bit more, do great things, make sure that we're getting good information out there, what we're doing at Henry County, and we're doing a lot of good stuff. And that good stuff is just not out there. And so what we need to do is to put more good stuff out there, like what we're doing in our communities, so that when this negative stuff comes in, it'll say, oh, not Henry County. So I just want to say that.
Well, very good, and that echoes much of what I was going to say as well. I, I do agree that it would be great to have an update from our fire department and to talk about all the great things that have happened in our fire department and all of the public safety. So I even note that we've already made some updates of every department, so is public safety in other departments as well, so. But I do agree that we need to definitely do better in our communications amongst each other and even through our administration, because again, our goal is to be able to respond and to represent Henry County in a way, and to be able to respond back to issues that we're getting from constituents as well. So let's continue to improve in that area. One of the other things that I'd like us to really think about in upcoming meetings, and we had a financial report that was given back in twenty seventeen, was very glad to see it. I'm looking forward to the next one, that also not only talks about our status, but some of the items that we've committed, because we'll soon begin the new budgeting process, as we've already alluded to already. And so we again need to be thinking about our overall financial strategy that will help us to begin thinking about what needs to do to, again, continue the momentum we've got, which is positive, and bringing the county up to speed and addressing safety and giving all the tools that are needed. But again, we've got to continue to pay attention to how we're going to fund this long term as well. And then the last thing I'd like to say is regarding the health and safety of our employees. I'm very proud of the results that have occurred. There have been some significant results that have occurred, even with the few individuals that have participated in the wellness program. There have been individuals that have really positively impacted their health, and that's been a good thing. And at the end of the day, we still want employees to continue to get involved in being healthy, not just for this county, but for yourselves and for your families. And we'll continue to look forward to how that we partner with you in, in addressing those needs. So those are my comments for today. I will say that I'm very excited about twenty eighteen. I believe this board made some great progress last year in twenty seventeen, and that it will, shall continue. And we will continue to work through anything that may come this way. And again, appreciate what the county management team has done to focus on what we call Team Henry, as we continue to focus on, in any ways that this board and our staff can continue to focus in that, I think we should continue as well. So any other comments from the board?
Chair, I think.
Commissioner Barron.
You wouldn't mind recognizing our Development Authority director, he's with us this morning.
Okay, very good. All right, we again welcome Mr. Sledge, who was introduced at our last Board of Commissioners meeting. And again, we appreciate you being here today as well. Thank you, and all of you others who are there, we appreciate those who have made the investment of time to participate in these meetings. So thank you again. We are now moving to the next item regarding upcoming meetings and events. We have our next meeting January the sixteenth at six thirty PM as a regular Board of Commissioners meeting. The January twenty-third workshop meeting has been canceled. And then we'll have our February, February the sixth, nine o'clock AM, regular Board of Commissioners meeting. So at this time, county attorney, do we have any items for the executive session?
We do have pending and potential litigation, and I understand there may also be some real estate acquisition to discuss.
Okay, so at this time, we'll call for a motion to, to move into our executive session?
So move.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? We'll now move into our executive session.